Good evening. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for April 5, 2021. Call upon Councilmember John Marriott.
If you'd please join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristen Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Entertain a motion. Mr. Pfeiffer?
I'd like to move to excuse Councilmember Jones from tonight's business meeting.
Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
Yes.
And the rest of council has voted yes as well, so that passes unanimously. Mr. Jones is excused from tonight's meeting. Next, we have the amendments for March 15, 2021. Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, they will pass as presented. Next, I'll call upon Mayor Pro Tem Dot Miller for a proclamation.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's my pleasure to make this proclamation this evening. I've served on the Board of Directors for the Ralston House for some time, and so although this issue is not a fun one to talk about, it is a very important one to talk about. So, the City of Arvada is proud to partner with Ralston House Child Advocacy Center in recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. On behalf of the many children who were interviewed at Ralston House in 2020, as well as the children and teens who are suspected of being sexually or physically abused. These children and their families directly benefit from the family-friendly care provided at Ralston House in 2020 and beyond. Ralston House provides comprehensive services to child victims and their families as they begin the healing process after traumatic experiences. During the month of April, our community joins with those who have suffered abuse by planting Pinwheel Gardens of Hope. The fundraising goal for 2021 is $60,000, which will be raised from large community gardens and from selling individual pinwheels. I have a couple of them here. As our streets and neighborhoods become planted with pinwheels, we encourage all Arvada citizens to join in renewing our commitment to preventing child abuse and learning what we can do to promote the safety and well-being of the children. A representative from Ralston House is with us online. Thank you so much for being with us. I'm going to read this proclamation, and then you could tell us where people can donate as well, if you wouldn't mind. This proclamation from the City of Arvada reads, "Whereas, although every child deserves to grow up in a nurturing environment free from harm and fear, all children do not receive appropriate care. In fact, too many children become victims at the hands of abusive perpetrators. And whereas, Arvada has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child abuse and to help parents obtain the assistance they need. And whereas, our community is stronger when all citizens become aware of child abuse prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention programs such as Ralston House succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas, it is up to us as a community to work tirelessly to end the abuse through awareness and action. And whereas, all citizens, community agencies, faith organizations, and businesses will work to increase their efforts to support families. Now therefore be proclaimed, the mayor and the city council of Arvada hereby designate the month of April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. We encourage all Arvada citizens to join in renewing our commitment to preventing child abuse and learning what we can do to promote the safety and well-being of children. Every responsible person will agree that even one abused child is too many." It's dated this fifth day of April 2021 and signed by the mayor and members of council. So I purchased these two pinwheels, and we'll be purchasing more because I feel like we need a whole garden. So if you wouldn't mind, just talking a little bit about Ralston House, and we'll get this proclamation to you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Mayor and the Councilmember of the City of Arvada. As you know, April is Children's Prevention Month, and the pinwheel is a symbol of hope, so we'd like to get as many of those planted around the community as possible. Information is on our website at ralstonhouse.org/pinwheels. You can purchase a garden of 50 pinwheels and a yard sign to place either at your business, your school, or your religious organization, or even in your own front yard for $250. Our goal is to sell 200 of these small gardens to get them out and around the Arvada community. So again, more information is on our website at ralstonhouse.org/pinwheels, and we greatly appreciate your support.
Well, that deserves a round of applause. Thank you very much. We will move now into public comment, and let me explain that public comment at our city council meetings is not a time of debate. It's a time that we provide for our citizens to be able to make public comment. It's your time. We do not respond other than there will be times where we'll direct our city staff to take some action or to look into something, but we will listen politely to any public comment that is made without making comment ourselves, so that it's your time to make your three-minute presentation to us. I'll begin with Randy Mormon.
Good evening, Mayor Williams and members of the Arvada City Council. My name is Randy Mormon, and I come to you tonight actually not to talk about recycling, but actually to discuss another topic that has been on my mind quite a lot lately. The events of March 22 in Boulder had a jarring impact on me, as it probably did on you as well. Now, when I walk into King Supers here in Arvada, I pause and I think about what happened and how it could happen anywhere, at any time, to any of us. I look at the cashiers, and the stockers, and the managers, and the pharmacists, and many other employees. They go about their daily work, and I try to put myself in their shoes. These essential workers, including our teachers, our childcare providers, our healthcare workers, and retail employees, all have been working tirelessly over the past year to make sure we have these important services and supplies that we need as a community to get through the pandemic. And now, the shooting in Boulder really adds additional stress, I think, to all of us. So I'm happy to hear that you are considering doing a city proclamation to express our gratitude to these essential workers, and I just encourage all of us, as we're out and about in the community, to pause, to stop, and to thank them when we see them and interact with them. So, thank you for doing that.
Thank you. We will have a discussion on that, about bringing that proclamation forward. Tom Di Ostino?
I want to thank you. This is the third time I've been before the council. I want to thank you for the opportunity. Since I was out there holding a sign this evening, and we had a number of people that were very positive with the message that they want to be represented. And this is what it's all about, is getting a right to vote. When you take the right to vote away from us, you've taken the essence of a citizenship away. If any of you listened to the Tom Martino Show that was on the radio about 10 days ago, there was a large number of people that called in, and Tom was very good. He didn't take sides, although he asked some salient questions about what was going on here. And it came down to the same question that everyone keeps asking, is why was there not a vote? And the answer from the city staff was all fluff. It really had no substance to the answer. And really, we have to vote on matters this big by the people. And when you don't do that, you are taking it away. And the biggest question that everyone asks is, what's next? If the council can vote on something without the input, without real input from the people, what's next? What are you going to vote on next? Are you going to increase the minimum wage? Are you going to do something with Amazon? Okay, we all know about a lot of these things. So I'm hoping that they do the responsible thing, put it up for vote, okay? When a tweet comes out and it crashes the website for the City of Arvada, it's not because there's too many tweets. It's because the system was inferior, and it should have been a more robust system. But of the people that did get through that day on the tweets, 91%, 91% is the calculation of the people that did not want to have their trash system changed. So I hope you'd consider, and I take a real responsible, and I'd like to see the numbers when it comes out. When they did come out, how many people are rejecting this system and taking the opt-out feature? That is a piece of data that's going to be very important. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Hi. I haven't done this before, so I hope I'm okay. I have a couple things that I'm just going to address quickly, but the reason I'm here is for the same thing as Randy Mormon. I was in King Supers when I looked on the news and saw what was happening in Boulder. I looked up at my pharmacist. I looked at my grocery store clerk, and I realized that I know these people, that I see them every week. They have been coughed on and yelled at, Costco workers, Walmart workers. They have gotten us through this pandemic and been harassed simply for just doing what their employer asks them to do, no matter their beliefs in the pandemic, and now this. And I realized that I would be devastated if I didn't see the gas station attendant at 7-Eleven who talks, we talk about music together. So I'm hoping that you guys make a proclamation that all workers in Arvada, to policemen, firemen, nurses, teachers, and our retail clerks, our gas station attendants, that everyone who got us through this pandemic, that we value them in this community. And then I would like to hit on really quick, that my husband and I do love the single payer option. I know that has been contentious, but we do, and so do our neighbors. And in light of the retail workers and what they do for us as a community, I would like to touch on affordable housing for them quickly. They've been told over and over again that they don't deserve a living wage, and now they're being shot at. So they're working, some of them are working for very low wages and risking their lives. They got us through the pandemic. They're always patient and with a smile and willing to talk to you. I think the least we can do as Arvadans is understand their individual stories and get them affordable housing. Welcome them into our community, that they are as important to us as everyone, that all the professions here matter in keeping this community safe and keeping it viable. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bruce Morrison?
Hi.
Good evening.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk to you. Today, I'm actually here to commend the city for making a decision on the single hauler trash. We are very excited to have fewer trucks coming up our cul-de-sac, and for us, it's going to be quite a bit cheaper. It's better for the environment, and you guys probably know, particularly staff, more than I do, that it will reduce wear on the roads and reduce taxes and increase recycling and all those good things. I'm not unsympathetic to people who want to vote on things, who want their voice heard, but from, there were, I can't remember the number, but there were a lot of people here when you voted to approve the single hauler trash. You did surveys, so I think you got a lot of public input. And this is a utility. This is not a major change in people's lives. It's not an increase in taxes. So I commend you for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Joyce Richardson?
Mr. Mayor and city council members, I want to thank you for allowing me a few minutes to share my thoughts and gratitude for the single hauler trash program that will begin in July. I'm here this evening to offer my wholehearted support for single hauler trash. I'm a member of the online forum of Arvada neighbors, and I've been saddened, as well as truthfully irked, by the portrayal of this program as being somehow shady and not within the purview of the city council to take this action. I do believe in representative government, even though I've not always agreed with the decisions made under this system, but on this particular issue, I do believe that the council worked hard to gather information and feedback and made a solid and informed decision. I have always believed in conservation and saving our planet, and the recycling component of the trash contract is a big conservation step. I also firmly believe our city streets will benefit from less heavy trucks. Our trash dump will last longer than expected with the increase in recycling, and my street, I think, will be quieter with less than seven trucks roaring down it during the week. I know some citizens feel that the opt-out fee is somehow a ripoff, but I also feel it's more than fair. I feel strongly that if you choose not to be part of the solution, you should have to pay. And since those actions directly affect the cost to the city on street repair, it seems fair. Lastly, my family will be saving 50% of our monthly trash bill, and for that, I also thank you. I'm looking forward to this positive change in July, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Mindy Moore?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Since residents don't comment at council workshops, I appreciate this time to speak about the last workshop regarding housing strategies. I'm speaking not only for myself, but also for Judy Douglas, Dr. Harriet Hall, and other Arvada residents. First, it appears that some on council feel that there needs to be more data. The city already paid to have a respected outside consultant, Root Policy, do a thorough evaluation of our data, our demographics, what people earn, what they pay in housing, what the housing stock is. From that evaluation, they showed that many of our residents are housing cost burdened, and not just renters, but also homeowners. The consultants also spoke to numerous residents. Root held several meetings with various stakeholders to get input. They also evaluated the responses from the 2019 community survey related to housing and affordability. So we have the data, much more than just the small Speak Up Arvada survey, data showing that housing affordability is an issue. Other cities use this type of research to develop housing goals, a vision of what they want their city to look like, what type of housing diversity and affordability ranges. They then draft an action plan to achieve those goals. They evaluate what other comparable cities have done, what's been successful, look at what tools may work best here, and then they draft a plan and go out for community input. Then city leaders consider that, adopt what their city needs, and the plan is eventually implemented. Second, there are some who say that the free market should determine housing. If you build enough homes and apartments, then home prices and rents will go down. Or things are cyclical. During a recession, housing prices will drop. Well, I want to acknowledge all the good work on housing that our city has been doing over the years on several issues, but we have seen that the free market is not working to keep our housing affordable along the front range in Arvada. We also heard that if a housing committee is formed to help with the strategy and action plan, it should include people with opposite opinions. We support the formation of a citizens' housing committee. However, does our golf advisory committee include people who disagree with the city's strategic plan for golf courses, or people who oppose golf courses, or say, "Let the free market work, and if people want to golf"? Does our parks advisory committee include people who think we don't need to create and maintain parks, trails, and open spaces, just let the developers build what they want and maintain it if they want to? No, you appoint residents with varying expertise and experience, but who recognize and support the city's visions and goals. Adequate and affordable housing, it's critical to keeping Arvada a city that welcomes residents of all ages, all income levels, and all demographics. Does our city council share that vision? We certainly hope so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all the signup sheets I have. Does anybody else wish to address city council at this time? Very good. Thank you.
My name is Rachel Hamburg, and I have been a resident in Arvada for nearly two years. Two weeks ago today, we lost 10 fellow Coloradans from violence by a man from our own community. Denny Strong, Devin Stanisak, Ricky Olds, Trelona Bartkojak, Terry Leicher, Officer Eric Tally, Suzanne Fountain, Kevin Mahoney, Lynn Murray, and Jody Waters. These people lost lives to the hands of a man from our own community. He bought and obtained this gun within our city and used it to take away these 10 people from their family and friends. As a current resident of Arvada and a law student at the University of Colorado in Boulder, this tragedy hit very close to home for me. People, like the family I live with, should not fear when they go to the grocery store, even to work, that they could be victims to such violent acts. I believe U.S. City Council should stand in solidarity with Boulder City Council in their efforts to persuade the state legislature to act on gun control now. I believe you all should act and respond to this tragedy in the following ways. First, I was saddened that I could find no public statement from the Arvada City Council condemning the violent acts that took place on March 22 at the King Supers in Boulder. I believe the city council should issue a public statement condemning the acts that took place two weeks ago, and recognize the tragedy that family and friends of victims are having to endure. Second, I believe U.S. Council members should stand alongside, support, and work with Boulder City Council in their efforts for firearm regulation within the state. As a law student, I understand that even though Arvada is a home rule municipality, that the Colorado General Assembly has found firearm regulation to be a matter of state concern. This, along with the recent Boulder lawsuit, support the current status of that you cannot regulate firearms at the current time. However, the General Assembly is considering overruling that determination, and if that is the case, that would allow municipalities like our very own to put stricter firearm regulations in place than the state as a whole. In these situations, I urge you to begin preliminary conversations about how the city could regulate firearms to a greater extent in order to prevent further mass shootings in our community at large and within the state. For example, you could choose to prohibit assault weapons. These weapons make shootings more lethal by causing greater damage and firing rounds more quickly. These weapons are clearly extremely dangerous. Likewise, you could choose to prohibit high-capacity magazines. These make gun violence incidences extremely dangerous and a threat to public safety. Thus, the Arvada City Council can and should regulate these firearms when possible. Lastly, U.S. Council members should support, advocate for, and share mental health resources within the city. As we all have become aware, the pandemic and isolation has caused further mental health crises for many. The city council should make resources readily accessible to residents of the city. Thank you for your time. I look forward to seeing the work you all do in the future.
Thank you very much. And our next speaker?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Matt Rivetta, and I am a resident on West 66 between Pierce and Wadsworth. And today, I'm just getting on to bring attention and ask for follow-through for some speed issues that we've been having in the corridor. Over two years ago, I had requested a speed study to be done, and a traffic engineer at that time suggested that there was a problem that would require some maybe spot enforcement or also speed awareness signs. At that time, he also suggested that he would request budget for speed awareness signs. Since then, we have had no speed awareness signs permanently affixed. We did have a couple temporarily placed, and I want to thank publicly Councilperson Simpson for coming to my property and also getting us some of those signs on a temporary basis. But we're looking for some behavior modification because we have a high-walking corridor with folks going to the high school, to the Seacrest Elementary. We all have kids in the neighborhood that bike up and down the road, and by your own engineer's statement, the percentage of people that go over 40 miles per hour on the road is alarming. And again, after talking to the area commander for Arvada PD, there was a suggestion that enforcement wasn't necessarily along this corridor, and I know it is costly. So again, I would like you to follow through with what was suggested and promised. Over two years ago, it would be a permanent speed awareness sign, budgeted for that area. Thank you.
Again, I'll pass that on to the city manager for follow-up, and I assume we have contact information so we can get back to this gentleman?
Yes, Mr. Barrett, I had exchanged emails, I believe.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Does that complete public comment? Very good. Thank you all for everybody's courtesy in terms of their public comments on all sides of issues. Next, I'll move on to the consent agenda. We have several items. The first is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and Badger Meter, Inc. for goods required for the automated metering infrastructure project. Next is a resolution approving the 2021 Arvada Visitor Center strategic plan. Next is a resolution authorizing the adoption of the City of Arvada 2019 water conservation plan. Next is a resolution for approval of the Corrected 2020 Community Development Block Grant funding budget from the original approved entitlement of approximately $470,000 to the actual approved entitlement of $469,996. Next is a resolution approving the issuance of the Jefferson County Housing Authority Foothills Regional Housing, multi-family housing revenue bonds for Allison Village in one or more series in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $19 million. These bonds solely for the purpose of satisfying Section 147-F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986. Next is a resolution accepting the granting of an easement by the City of Arvada to the Public Service Company of Colorado for the purpose of installing new electric service. And final on the consent agenda is a resolution authorizing a purchase and sale agreement between Arvada and Jefferson Center Metropolitan District Number One. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that consent agenda items R-21-052 through R-21-058 all be approved.
Motions for approval. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rest of council votes yes, as well with David Jones being an excused absence. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to resolutions. First resolution is a resolution authorizing the City of Arvada to continue its participation in an intergovernmental agreement supporting and funding the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail project extension at Indiana Street and Colorado Highway 128 in an amount not to exceed $243,000. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a follow-up from the workshop of February the 8th, where we presented some information to the council regarding the status of this project and the future actions that we would be bringing before you, which includes this resolution tonight for the intergovernmental agreement. This intergovernmental agreement is with four other organizations, which includes the City of Boulder, Boulder County, City of Westminster, and Jefferson County for the crossings at Indiana Street and Colorado Highway 128. These crossings are integral to allowing the project to proceed. We did, as you noted in the report that's presented with the council agenda, there was the withdrawal of City and County of Broomfield from this agreement. However, based on the preliminary cost information and the way we've estimated the cost of the remaining partners, we believe that we will be able to continue to participate at the amount that's in the IGA that we previously had estimated to you at an amount not to exceed $243,000. We are also working with Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge in this area. I know that some follow-up comments from both Councilmember Ford and Councilmember Pfeiffer, which required some additional follow-up with, for example, in this case, with the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge regarding wildlife crossings, that remains something that is on the something that is on the priority list. And also, as I understand it, there were some questions that Councilmember Ford had regarding the previous soil study, that as I understand it, those questions have been answered. So, and if there are any questions that anyone from council has, I know that Deputy Director of Vibrant Neighborhood and Communities, Vanessa James, is available to answer those questions if anyone has any. We are certainly recommending approval of the resolution. We would like to join with Jefferson County, which approved the resolution back in December, Westminster City Council, which approved the IGA back on February the 22nd. Boulder County is scheduled to take action on April 6th, and the City of Boulder is scheduled to take action on April 13th in order to help this project move forward.
Okay, opening up for City Council question or action. Mr. Marriott, first.
If we don't have any questions, I'll make a motion here. So I'll start by moving that R-21-059, a resolution authorizing the City of Arvada to continue its participation in an intergovernmental agreement supporting the funding, or supporting and funding, the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail Project Extension at Indiana Street and Colorado Highway 28, Colorado Highway 128 in an amount not to exceed $243,000 be approved. And I'll just make a quick comment, and that's, I'm happy to see us continuing to participate in this and for the local governments to cooperate with this. Regardless of what your feelings are about Rocky Flats, the fact is, there are parts of the Wildlife Refuge that are accessible and that there's a significant safety concern with people being able to cross these busy highways. And this grant, our participation in this grant, solves those very significant public safety concerns, and so I'm all for it.
Okay, all votes been cast. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
I'll be voting no, Mayor.
Thank you. This passes on a five to one with Ms. Ford voting no, Williams, Pfeiffer, Marriott, Miller, and Simpson voting yes, and Mr. Jones being excused. Thank you. Move on to Resolution 21-060, authorizing an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Arvada and Denver Water. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The purpose of this amendment to the intergovernmental agreement is to adjust the date for the commencement of construction to July 15, 2023. This is the date that has been presented to us by Denver Water based on their construction schedule and the approval schedules from Boulder County and other parties at this particular point. Based on this information, we anticipate receiving deliveries from the gross reservoir expansion by 2028. At this time, Denver Water informs us they're on a parallel path of proceeding with Boulder County permitting, and at this point, we don't see any issues with them being able to complete this project, so therefore, we're recommending approval of the resolution and the amendment to the intergovernmental agreement.
Okay, questions or action? Mr. Pfeiffer.
I'll take, I want to make a comment. You know, we have people coming in and telling us that we should put our trash out for our vote. But you know, this gross reservoir, is it what, an $80 million investment?
About $110 million.
Oh, $110 million now, okay. So, the citizens come in front of us and complain about the trash of them paying $19, but $110 million investment, we didn't take to the voters, but there's not a word said about the water and the gross reservoir impact. So, just, it's just, I think people need to really understand which battles they choose because representative government is clearly here to do what I believe is the best for our communities, best for our citizenry, and to make as sound decisions as possible. I know my other councilmembers probably did not skip, didn't think I was going to say this about this particular one, but gross reservoir is one, and Jefferson Parkway is the other one. So we just need to be very careful of what we wish for.
Mr. Marriott.
So I was going to make a motion if there are no questions, but I saw Ms. Simpson push her buttons.
Nope, she pushed a different button.
Oh, she did, okay. So I'll go ahead and make a motion.
She's pushing my button.
Yeah. Thought that was my job. All right, so let me make a motion. I move that R-21-060, a resolution authorizing an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement number 500817 by and between the City of Arvada and Denver Water be approved. And I'd like to make a comment, too. My comment's a little different than Mr. Pfeiffer's, but my comment is, is about what a great job the city has done over the long term in participating in this project, that this has obviously been ongoing for a number of years, decades even, and the city has consistently participated and looked towards the future vision to be here. We are getting a great deal with this particular project. We are getting water storage for all our water rights that will lead clear to all the water we need for build-out, which not a lot of cities can say that. And commend the staff for both having the foresight many years ago to enter into this agreement, but also ongoing to continue this agreement and continue getting it to where it is. And, you know, my hope is that I will get to see equipment working on and building that project in the very near future. So again, thanks to the staff for making this happen.
Yeah, I've got one comment. I saw on today's paper that a federal judge dismissed an environmental lawsuit against this project, so that's just one more step in the right direction to get this completed. I vividly remember being on the negotiating team for the City of Arvada and getting to what Mr. Marriott is talking about in terms of a very favorable outcome with Denver Water. I hope there comes a day in the future when some future mayor doesn't have to add into his state-of-the-city speech to shower with a friend and that that can, that can go away with Mayor Williams. So with that, Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. And the rest of council votes yes, as well, with the exception of Mr. Jones, who was an excused absence. Next, we have a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Arvada and Apex Park and Recreation District to offset $431,000 of expenses related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The purpose of this agreement is to rescind one that you approved on November 2, 2020. It was a subrecipient agreement with Apex and replace it with this new intergovernmental agreement that will provide Apex with funding in the amount of $431,000 to offset costs directly related with the COVID-19 pandemic. The reason why we're taking this action is that there was some disconnect with the use of the funds, which required Apex to ask us to rescind the original subrecipient agreement and reissue this new agreement in order to allow them to use the funds to offset the costs that are directly related to the pandemic. And we were able to work with our partners in Jefferson County to do that as part of the Jefferson County allocation, and that agreement is before you tonight, and we're asking for you to approve the resolution and the intergovernmental agreement.
So, Mr. Devon, these were CARES Fund dollars that, so these are dollars that flowed from the federal government?
Well, they were originally CARES dollars, and we had to basically cancel that subrecipient agreement, and then we were able to find some additional funding, which is what the intergovernmental agreement is for, in order to assist Apex with this, with their challenges related to COVID.
Very good. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you. I'll move that R-21-061, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Arvada and Apex Park and Recreation District to offset $431,000 of expenses related to the COVID-19 pandemic be approved. I'll make a quick comment about this as well. Again, I want to commend the city for sharing these CARES Act dollars with some of our other local governments. I know we did the same for the Arvada Center, as well as having Hills, Parks, and Rec District, some of the other, other special districts within our area. And I think it, it's one of the reasons it makes this area so unique is the cooperation we have between governmental agencies and within the region. It's also why we will do better exiting this pandemic than other places may. So again, thanks to the city for doing that.
Good. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
Yes.
Explain the rest of the votes. The rest of council votes yes, as well, with the exception of Mr. Jones, who is excused. Pass the six to zero. Next, we have a resolution authorizing an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the Colorado Department of Transportation for Wadsworth Turn Lanes. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This intergovernmental agreement amends a previous agreement with CDOT in order to provide for partial reimbursement for construction cost overruns on Wadsworth. This is the project right by the Arvada Center where there was additional turn lanes put on Wadsworth from West 68th Avenue to West 72nd Avenue. This is something that I think we've wanted to do for a long time. I remember former Councilmember Allard used to ask me about these right-hand turn lanes a lot, and so now we have them completed. There were some cost overruns associated with the location of utilities and some fiber. There was the need for a retaining wall and to revise a planned guardrail. And CDOT, who's been a great partner with this project and had actually done the original engineering for this project, when we discussed these cost overruns with them, they agreed that they shared some responsibility because they were responsible for the original design. And so we are proposing with this IGA to share the cost overruns with CDOT under the previous negotiated cost-sharing split of 84.25% for CDOT and 15.75% for Arvada. We think it's a very fair, reasonable solution, and that's why we're recommending approval of the amendment to the intergovernmental agreement.
Ms. Simpson.
Thank you. I'll reserve the motion if anyone doesn't have any questions.
I see no other questions. You may proceed.
Perfect, and since we're all making comments, I just want to commend the city for the great work in making sure this gets done, and our partners in CDOT for, you know, working with us in such good faith, and also just the streets team that put this together. I actually take this turn lane quite frequently because it's close to my house, and so it's absolutely beautiful and extremely well-done, so congratulations to everyone involved in that work. So, I move that R-21-062, a resolution authorizing an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the Colorado Department of Transportation for Wadsworth Turn Lanes be approved.
Motion for approval. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
Well, I'm going to vote yes on this, and I'd just like to make a comment as well that I, too, use this lane quite frequently, and I think it's a fabulous addition to our streets.
Thank you. Rest of council shares your view and votes yes, as well, with Mr. Jones being an excused absence. Pass the six to zero. I'll move next to a resolution authorizing a grant agreement between the City of Arvada and Jefferson County for emergency rental assistance. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This intergovernmental agreement will allow us to enter into a funding, funding agreement with Jefferson County to accept the U.S. Department of Treasury Emergency Rental Assistance Funds in the amount of $499,000. This is part of the congressional action back at the end of December, which established the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, appropriated $23.785 billion, of which Jefferson County received 17.5 million of that. They're sharing this award with the local governments within Jefferson County. $499,000 of that is wrapped into this intergovernmental agreement and will allow us to continue to assist our neighbors with rental, you know, rental assistance as needed through the remainder of this pandemic. And our housing team is also working on a review and funding options to continue assisting residents that are in need of mortgage assistance. This one covers rental assistance, and because that is a need that has been expressed to us, we continue to support this, this agreement and recommend approval.
Okay, opening up for City Council questions or action.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Devon, I wanted to ask you a question. On the program administration, at first, I looked at that with some curiosity. Is 15%, you know, it's 15% of the funds, is that sort of standard? Are we looking to hire someone on, with that $75,000?
We're not looking to hire a full-time person. We might need to outsource some of the work from a contract standpoint, and the 15% is standard. Whenever we can, we try not to use that much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
If there's not any other questions, I'll go ahead and make the comment.
You may proceed.
Thank you. I move that Resolution 21-063, a resolution authorizing a grant agreement between the City of Arvada and Jefferson County for emergency rental assistance be approved.
Motion for approval. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
I'll be voting yes.
Thank you. The rest of council is voting yes, as well, with the exception of Mr. Jones, who is an excused absence. Next, I'll move on to a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for CARES Act funding in the amount of $276,525. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a little different CARES Act funding from the previous CARES Act funding. This is CARES Act funding that is associated with the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Funds, again, specifically to assist people with housing-related issues. And this, these are directly allocated funds to us from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and again, allows us to continue to assist residents of Arvada that are facing housing instability and, and those kinds of things, and at particular threat for maybe being evicted. So we're recommending approval of this intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement as well.
Mr. Marriott.
I just have a question, Mr. Devon, on this. Does this intergovernmental agreement, or do these funds come with a prescription of exactly how they're used? In other words, will these be used to do more Section 8 vouchers, or emergency rental assistance, or some of both, or even, even some other method that they be deployed?
Well, they have to be used for housing. They have to be used for emergency rental assistance. I don't know if they precisely prescribe Section 8, or, you know, housing vouchers versus, versus other form of emergency rental assistance. I don't know if we have anyone on the, on the call at the meeting right now that can answer that question, but we can certainly follow back up with you if you'd like to.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I wouldn't mind knowing that, just to know from the city's standpoint, does this obligate us to kind of a different program for us to run, or does this meld into some of the things we do already, exactly how we do this?
Well, from that standpoint, and our housing manager, Carrie Espinosa, is on the line, so I'll defer to our expert, Carrie.
Hi, Carrie, thank you.
Mr. Devon, hi. Good evening, everyone. These funds are going to be used for motel vouchers to assist the non-congregate sheltering model that we've been using throughout the county during COVID-19. They will also be used for, excuse me, I'm so sorry, not emergency rental assistance, they won't be used for Section 8 vouchers, but for the non-congregate sheltering to support the severe weather shelter network and their efforts throughout the season. So that's what the funds will be used for.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Pfeiffer.
I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move that Resolution 21-065, a resolution, am I on the right one? I am on the right one. It's 6-4, yep, sorry. I had to pause there for a minute because I scrolled too fast. I move that Resolution 21-064, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for CARES Act funding in the amount of $276,525 be approved.
Motion for approval. All votes cast. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rest of council votes yes, as well, with Mr. Jones abstaining, or, I'm sorry, being And the final resolution tonight is a resolution permanently ratifying the City Manager's temporary authorization of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Arvada, the County of Jefferson, and the City of Lakewood authorizing the severe weather shelter network to be a subrecipient of Community Development Block Grant Funds. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You may recall that we had an extremely cold February, and And as a result of that very, very cold February, the sheltering, the non-congregate sheltering, which is supported by the severe weather shelter network through the collaborative efforts of the city of Arvada, the city of Lakewood, and Jefferson County, was basically allocated more funding towards severe weather shelter nights than what was, what we had really on hand. So as we approached the end of February and beginning of March, we received a request, an urgent request, to provide additional funding. This had to be provided through an intergovernmental agreement. The city attorney advised me, and I always pay attention to the city attorney's advice regarding that matter. But we also determined that I would be able to authorize it on an emergency basis using the emergency authority that I had at the time to do that, as long as we brought it back for ratification by the city council at a city council meeting. So I, and I really felt confident that the council would not want us to withhold funding, which is why I felt comfortable with using my emergency authority to approve the intergovernmental agreement. But we also resolved to bring this back in the form of a resolution and the agreement that is with you, before you tonight. So we're recommending approval of the agreement.
Okay, Ms. Miller?
I'd like to reserve the motion.
Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, I do. I just have a question, Mr. Devon, and I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to be sure. So the source of the funding for this is not our general fund or our parks fund or any of that stuff. It comes from community development block grant dollars given to us for this type of purpose. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that R twenty-one dash zero six five, a resolution permanently ratifying the city manager's temporary authorization of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the city of Arvada, the county of Jefferson, and the city of Lakewood authorizing the severe weather shelter network to be a subrecipient of community development block grant funds. CFDA number fourteen dash two eighteen be approved.
Motion for approval. Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Rest of the council present votes yes as well, Mr. Jones being an excused absence. Thank you. Next, Ms. Miller, if you'll do our first readings.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that CB twenty-one dash zero one three, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Article Six of Chapter Thirty-eight, Environment of the City of the Arvada City Code and Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one four, an ordinance authorizing an additional appropriation for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. And Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one five, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Arvada and the Jefferson County School District, number R one, relating to streets improvements to Ralston Road Public Project, number eighteen dash S T dash forty, all be approved on first reading ordered published in full and public hearing to be set for April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at six fifteen P M.
Ms. Simpson? Thank you. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Rest of the council votes yes as well, with Mr. Jones being an excused absence that passes six to zero. We'll move on to appointments to boards and commissions. We'll just do this round robin. Ms. Ford, I'm going to start with you for the Arvada Arts and Cultural Commission.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I move to appoint Kim Wagner of the Arvada Arts and Culture Commission for an unexpired term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, and Ryan Eschenbach for an unexpired term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
And Ms. Ford, how do you vote on your motion?
I vote yes.
The rest of us do as well. That passes six to zero, Mr. Jones being an excused absence. Mr. Pfeifer?
Yes, I'll move to appoint Stephanie Wells, Jonathan Dunkle, Chris Gartenman, Joseph Damgard, Tracy Daly, and Heather Carlson to the Arvada Festival Commission for a full three-year term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, and Catherine Hollibird to the Arvada Festival Commission for an unexpired term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. And I move to reappoint Michael Bozeman, Charles Jones, Eric Camim, and Ethan Lutz for a three-year term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
All votes are cast. Ms. Ford?
Yes.
The other five of us present in council chambers vote yes as well, Mr. Jones being an excused absence. Mr. Marriott?
I move to reappoint Kevin Bonnet to the Arvada Liquor Licensing Authority for a three-year term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Ms. Ford?
I vote yes.
The others vote yes as well, Mr. Jones being an excused absence that passes six to zero. I will move to appoint Eli Ferret to the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority for a five-year term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six, and call upon Ms. Miller to ratify.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that, I move to ratify Mayor Williams' appointment of Eli Ferret to the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority for a five-year term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Ms. Ford?
I vote yes.
And the rest of us do as well, with Mr. Jones being an excused absence that passes six to zero. Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. So we're on Board of Adjustment. I move to reappoint Tom Alincovich, apologies if I mispronounced that, and Richard Derryberry to the Board of Adjustment for three-year terms ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
The rest of us do as well, with Mr. Jones being an excused absence that passes six to zero. Ms. Ford, you have the Building Code Advisory Board.
I move to reappoint Jim Johansson and John Blake Tomlinson to the Building Code Advisory Board for three-year terms ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, and I vote yes.
Thank you. The other five vote yes as well, so that passes unanimously with Mr. Jones being an excused absence. Mr. Pfeifer?
Yes, I move to reappoint William Cheever to the Design Review Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
As do the other five, with Mr. Jones being an excused absence that passes six to zero. Mr. Marriott?
As I move to appoint Sharon Davis, Leif Carlson, and Pete Metropolis to the Golf Advisory Committee for three-year terms ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Mr. Pfeifer, if you'll, there you go. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And the other five do as well, with Mr. Jones being an excused absence that passes six to zero. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to appoint Keisha Givner to the Human Services Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Do you want me to do the second one as well?
Yes.
I move to reappoint Heather Arnold Rennecker and Robert Slay for a three-year term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Five of us have voted yes. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
That passes six to zero. Ms. Simpson, you have the Park Advisory Committee.
All right. I move to appoint Jackie Marquis to the Park Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, and Travis Torline to the Park Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. I move to reappoint Abby McNeil, Michael Miller, Stacy Parcell, and Jerry Sampson for three-year terms ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
Yes.
As do the other five present, Mr. Jones being an excused absence that passes six to zero. Ms. Ford, you've got the Planning Commission.
I move to appoint Tim Knapp to the Planning Commission for a four-year term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. I move to reappoint Douglas McGee for a four-year term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, and I vote yes on that.
Thank you. And we have five yes votes in chambers, Mr. Jones being an excused absence that passes six to zero. Mr. Pfeifer?
Yes, I move to appoint Jasmine Petrovic and Kia Ruze to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, and Laurel Maitri to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. And I move to reappoint Keegan Conley, Keith Emery, Christina Gonzalez Avram, and Harriet Hall for a three-year term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Five in chambers vote yes as well, Mr. Jones being an excused absence that passes six to zero. Mr. Marriott?
So I'll move to appoint Jesse Dubin to the Transportation Committee for a three-year term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. And I also move to reappoint Jadwiga Brown for a three-year term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
That was our last vote. Let me, I bet we'll get the same outcome, but we'll vote again. Maybe. There we go. Okay, we have now voted correctly with five in chambers voting yes in addition to Ms. Ford. So that passes six to zero, Mr. Jones being an excused absence. Now I will move to appoint Jim Arnt to the Transportation Committee for a three-year term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
And I'll move to ratify Mayor Williams' appointment of Jim Arnt to the Transportation Committee for a three-year term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Way to go, Mr. Marriott. You just stepped on Ms. Miller's motion, but that's okay. The motion's been made. I thought I, I thought I had the whole committee, not just part of it. It's okay. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
That passes six to zero, Mr. Jones being an excused absence. Ms. Miller, you now get to address the last one. Oh, wait a minute. We already had that. Did you already do Jadwig? Okay, so that completes the appointments. Let me just comment, we are blessed in Arvada to have so many citizens who volunteer to serve. And these are, for the most part, purely volunteer positions. There's no compensation other than the sense of giving back to your community. And, you know, I talked to other mayors and I know fellow council members, talked to fellow council members, that, you know, it's really an exception, the number of people. We literally had a book, Yea Thick, which was almost as heavy as Ms. Miller is, to go through. And council spends a lot of time, we've got a very efficient way from which we conduct these interviews. This year, it was done primarily by Zoom, but it went well. And we are, again, the talent level of our folks is through the roof. So we're very pleased with the people who we selected. And those who we didn't select, we would urge them to continue to apply and we'll sure try to get you plugged in at some point somewhere. So with that, we'll move on to our public hearings. And I will open the public hearings on the ratification and approval of CP two thousand and twenty-one oh 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 one, a resolution by the Planning Commission for the city of Arvada, Colorado, to amend the two thousand and fourteen Arvada Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation pertaining to Lazy Susan from Jefferson County R one residential zoning to R N twelve point five residential neighborhood zoning with an amendment to the suburban residential located at one six seven seven oh and one six seven nine oh, West Sixty-third Place. Same time, we'll be considering R twenty-one oh six six, a resolution setting for certain findings of fact and conclusions as to the annexation of certain land into the city of Arvada, Colorado. Lazy Susan, one six seven seven oh and one six seven nine oh, West Sixty-third Place. We'll also consider Council Bill twenty-one oh oh nine, an ordinance annexing certain land into the city of Arvada. Lazy Susan, one six seven seven oh and one six seven nine oh, West Sixty-third Place. And finally, we'll consider Council Bill twenty-one oh one oh, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the city of Arvada. Lazy Susan, from Jefferson County R one residential to R N twelve point five residential neighborhood, one point five dwelling units per acre, and amending the official zoning maps of the city of Arvada, Colorado, generally located at one six seven seven oh and one six seven nine oh, West Sixty-third Place. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have Planning Manager Rob Smetana, who will introduce and present these items.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. As you mentioned, the applicant is requesting ratification of the comprehensive plan amendment and approval of annexation and rezoning. The site is currently occupied by a single-family home and one outbuilding and consists of two platted lots measuring approximately one point one five acres. Access to both of the lots would be provided from West Sixty-third Place. The comprehensive plan amendment is necessary to align the plan with the existing size of the lots proposed for annexation, as well as with other lots located within the same subdivision. The Planning Commission unanimously approved the comprehensive plan amendment and recommended approval of the rezoning, of the annexation and rezoning requests at their February sixteenth meeting. We have received a signed posting log and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. The applicant is in attendance, as well as Jeremiah Bebo, a staff planner, who's available for any questions from you. Thank you.
Very good. The posting log and the mailing affidavit will be made part of the record. Anyone who's going to testify on this matter, do we have somebody on Zoom or how are we for the applicant? Is the applicant present on Zoom?
Yes, I am.
Okay, can you raise your right hand and swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give and these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Thank you.
We're not seeing you. Is your camera on or?
There we go.
There we go. Very good.
Okay. I'm not in control of the slides. Do, I'll just go through the slides if that's okay?
We'll make sure they get advanced.
Okay.
You ready to move to the next one?
Yes, please. This gives a better idea of Lot eighteen and nineteen. It sits right along Sixty-fourth Avenue. The existing house is on Lot eighteen. It is hooked to city water already. And we're just requesting the rezoning to R N twelve point five. It's consistent with the other properties in the surrounding area. We can move to the next slide. This just shows a little better, this fifty-foot exception is owned by Arvada for their utilities. And here you can see the existing one-story frame home with the detached one-car garage and a small shed in the back. Lot nineteen, you can see is currently vacant. There is one small shed on the very back property line, but that is it. I'm just looking to hook this to city sewer, city water. Next slide, please. This is a good aerial showing the property on Sixty-fourth Avenue. It has great access right off of Sixty-third Place. There is an existing gate already that accesses Lot nineteen. And it just kind of shows it is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. And we can just go to the next slide, which is just going to be zoomed in, showing the intersections and the lots. And then I just have one final slide. Annexation slash rezoning in the comprehensive plan conforms with this project aligns with the community and the economic development. And this, again, just kind of shows it's zoomed in, the two parcels. And that's really, that's the last slide.
Very good. Do we have any member of the public that wishes to address city council on this matter? Okay, I will close the public comment portion. Since there was no additional public comment or questions, there's no need for rebuttal. I'll open it up for city council questions or action. Mr. Pfeifer?
Well, I was hoping to hear a little bit more. Am I missing the, what's the project scope exactly? I mean, you're just annexing in and building houses on it?
Yes, so I'm just annexing in to hook the existing house on Lot eighteen to city sewer because currently it's on a
Only water?
Septic system. Yeah, currently it's on city water, but we'd like to go to city sewer. And then on Lot nineteen, we're just looking sewer. And then on Lot 19, we're just looking to build one single-family resident home and hook that to city water and city sewer.
I guess the question I maybe for the Arvada team is, you know, why the zoning went on, the estate zoning, or something else, if they're just putting one house per acre, or whatever the case is here. Why did we pick 12.5 houses per acre?
So the, Councilman Pfeiffer, the 12.5 references the minimum lot sizes, so
Okay.
So the zoning requested is residential neighborhood, minimum lot size is 12,500, which is consistent with some of the other lots in this neighborhood that have annexed in. This neighborhood does obtain, and many of the lots are still within unincorporated Jefferson County, and we do have existing out-of-city utility agreements with most of these lots for their water service. However, most of them are on septic systems still. So this applicant is requesting sanitary sewer service for the existing home, as well as for the new home. And that was kind of the trigger for the annexation request.
And thank you for reminding me, we don't do units per acre anymore. I kind of forgot that. We kind of went away from that. So these, what's the total acreage of these two lots? I didn't catch that.
It is, so the total annexation request is 1.15 acres, and that'll include, there's a little accepted portion along West 64th that was dedicated to the city a while back for right-of-way purposes. So you'll see that there's a city sidewalk that goes through that area, and so we just included that in the annexation as we typically would.
And so with this, with this change, with 12,500 per use, how many houses can they build on this? It's quite a few actually, still. They just did one, but they could do more, right?
I think on that larger lot, the Lot 19, you know, and whether or not it was in the city or in the county, technically, the zoning would allow for another subdivision of just one more lot, which, like I said, they could do. There's other things that come into play, you know, fire's going to need access if they do a lot in the rear. They have to have a minimum for utilities as well. But I think the maximum that they could do, just based on this lot sizes, is potentially one more.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Ms. Simpson?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
You may proceed.
Okay. I move that CP 2021-001, a resolution by the Planning Commission for the City of Arvada, Colorado, to amend the 2014 Arvada Comprehensive Plan Use Designation pertaining to Lazy Susan from Jefferson County R-1 Residential Zoning to RN-12.5 Residential Neighborhood zoning with an amendment to suburban residential located at 16770 and 16790 West 63rd Place be ratified and approved. This motion is based on the facts and findings of facts adopted by the Planning Commission.
Motions for approval of the ratification and approval of the resolution of the Planning Commission. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
The other five of us present in chambers vote yes as well. Mr. Jones being excused absence that passes six to zero. Ms. Simpson? When you take one, you get to take them all. No problem. We're just keeping you from a basketball game. It's no problem.
Yes. All right, I got them all, and I'm going to read fast, y'all, because it's tip-off time. I move that R21-066, a resolution setting for certain findings of fact and conclusions as to the annexation of certain land into the City of Arvada, Colorado, Lazy Susan 16770 and 16790 West 63rd Place be approved.
Read almost as fast as Ms. Miller reads. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
All right.
We've got five additional yes votes here in chambers. Passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being excused absence.
All right. Next one, I move that CB 21-009, an ordinance annexing certain land into the City of Arvada, Lazy Susan 16770 and 16790 West 63rd Place be approved. Numbered 4756, an order published and titled only.
Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
There's five vote, yes votes in chambers. It passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being excused absence. Last one.
All right. I move that CB 21-010, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the City of Arvada, Lazy Susan from Jefferson County R-1 Residential to RN 12.5 Residential Neighborhood, 1.5 DU/AC, and amending the official zoning maps of the City of Arvada, Colorado, generally located at 16770 and 16790 West 63rd Place be approved. Final reading, numbered 4757, and ordered published by title only.
Motions for approval? Votes in chambers are all yes. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Passed unanimously with Mr. Jones being excused. Next, we're going to have, I'm going to open the public hearing on Council Bill 21-011, an ordinance vacating a tract of land dedicated as right-of-way for West 52nd Place, west of Carr Street, City of Arvada, City of, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado. Mr. Marriott has a motion he wishes to make.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. So I own adjoining, two adjoining properties to this subject property, so for that reason, I would like to ask my fellow council members to recuse me from this item, and I'd like to leave the council chambers.
I need a motion to excuse. Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. I move to excuse Councilmember Marriott from voting on this issue, and also to allow him to leave the council chambers.
Okay, if people will vote on that motion. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And the other four of us have voted, Mr. Marriott out of council chambers as well. Very good. With that, Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, we'll have Planning Manager Rob Smetana introduce this item.
Thank you again. As mentioned, the applicant is requesting vacation of a portion of West 52nd, 52nd Place right-of-way. The size of the requested vacation area is approximately 3,560 square feet, which is on the south side of the street. The street is currently fully constructed, and there's no further widening anticipated, and there would be no impact on the existing improvements if the right-of-way were to be vacated. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the vacation at their February 16th meeting. We have received a signed posting log and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. We do have the applicant here, as well as Cheryl Drake, one of our staff planners. She is available for questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The posting log and mailing affidavit will be made part of the record. Representative for the applicant, if you'll raise your right hand, swear or affirm the testimony you have given, these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
You may proceed.
All right. If you could go to the next slide, real quick. My name is Corey Whitaker. I lead our real estate team at Habitat for Humanity of Metro Denver. Just to give you a quick background on this project, currently Habitat for Humanity is under contract on this property with the Arvada Housing Authority to develop for-sale affordable homes in Arvada. We are very excited to do that, and I was very excited to hear a lot of talk about affordable housing tonight at the meeting. And so we have teamed up with a design team to do that, so we have a representative from Radiant here tonight. We also have our civil engineer here, but I think in the interest of time, I might just walk through this myself and steal the thunder from them. So if you could go to the next slide. This is the property, so you can see it's located at the intersection of 52nd and 52nd Place and Carr Street. The vacated, or the request for the right-of-way is at that northern portion of the property. So the property is zoned R24. It's about 1.132 acres, and we're really requesting just about 3,500 acre, or 3,500 square feet be added to that property. Next slide, please. And this is a little bit more zoomed in. And so really, the request is so that we can kind of make this part of our property and really match the typical street section in this area. You can see across the street, the property line is much closer to the sidewalk, and that is very typical, and so we want to make sure that these homeowners own this property, they maintain this property, and it made sense to vacate it into the property so that it was more like that. Next slide, please. And then in terms of the criteria for the vacation, so the vacation requested does not disturb or change the street at 52nd Place, and the and the property line exists behind the curb and gutter, leaving the existing sidewalk to remain. The vacation won't create any landlocked property, and we believe the land vacated is not necessarily necessary for the public use and convenience. The vacation does not restrict access to any lot tract or parcel, and then the vacation will not reduce the quality of the public services or the provisions necessary for emergency services. You know, there's no utilities within that vacation currently. So we believe it's consistent, and we'd appreciate your vote for approval.
Okay, do we have any additional testimony on this matter from anybody? We do not. I'll close the public testimony portion. Ms. Miller has reserved the motion. Ms. Simpson, do you have any questions? Okay. Ms. Miller, you may make the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 21-011, an ordinance vacating a tract of land dedicated as right-of-way for West 52nd Place, west of Carr Street, City of Arvada, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado, be approved on final reading, number 4758, and ordered published by title only.
Motions for approval? All votes are cast. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Williams, Pfeiffer, Miller, and Simpson vote yes. Mr. Marriott is recused. Mr. Jones is excused absence, so this passes five to zero. Congratulations. I look forward to when you bring the metro mayors out to do some construction work on this project.
We'll be happy to have you. Thank you so much.
We can have Mr. Marriott. Do we have to vote to let him sit in again? I guess not. I guess it's just sort of automatic. I'm glad we're providing some humor for our team tonight.
Mr. Mayor, if we were going to do that, I could have just left, because I'm sure I would not get voted back.
I would have voted you back, Councilmember Marriott.
Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 21-012, an ordinance vacating a public access easement located within Lot 4B, Block 1, Candelas Commercial, City of Arvada, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and this is related also to the following item. I don't know if we
Okay, so we can, we'll also consider then the major modifications for wet rabbit car wash, generally located at 9159 Kendrick Street.
Yes. And again, we'll have Planning Manager Rob Smetana introduce this item.
Thank you. One last time this evening. As you mentioned, the applicant is requesting vacation of a public access easement, as well as three major modifications from land development code requirements to allow for the development of a car wash on the subject property. The site is currently vacant and approximately one and a half acres in size. There is, the proposal is for a approximately 5,900-square-foot enclosed tunnel car wash. The public access easement would be vacated, but then reestablished at a slightly different location on the property. The three major modifications would allow for the car wash bay doors to face a public street, allow the equipment associated with the vacuum stations to be located outside the main building, and allow for the equipment enclosure to be taller than that allowed by the land development code. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the public access easement vacation and the major modifications at their March 16th meeting. We have received the signed posting log and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. The applicant is in attendance, and we also have Planner Carol Ibanez to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Very good. The posting log and mailing affidavit will be made part of the record if the applicant will raise their right hand. Swear or affirm the testimony you'll give, and these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Very good. If you'll state your name and make your presentation.
Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Craig Kahn with the Kahn Architectural Group. We're the architects for the Wet Rabbit Express Car Wash, and we are here to request approval of the same. I will make this as brief as I can with the help of the person manning the slides. Next slide, please. The site is located on the northeast corner of Candelas Parkway and West 91st Place. Next slide. This is an aerial shot, give me a better view. It's next to the King Supers Center on the corner of Candelas and Indiana Street. It is vacant lot. It will be subdivided, or it is subdivided, into two lots. We will be developing the car wash on the western side of it, along Kendrick Street, which runs along the west side of the property you see here. Next slide. This is, again, is a site plan showing the two lots in question, with West 91st Place running to the south, Kendrick to the west. Next slide. The site plan shows the car wash. It is a single tunnel, automatic car wash with our patrons queuing along the entry drive on the west side of the building. Access to the site will be by an existing curb cut directly opposite, currently in existence by the King Supers. We will be installing a ring road around the two lots to be developed, and with the other entrance along Kendrick Street that you see in the northwest corner there. Next slide, please. There's the car wash. Next slide. That is the vacuum, the separate vacuum and trash station. Next slide. And the ring road going around the site to provide services as well as a utility loop around the development. Next slide. This is an aerial showing the car wash site. Cars will queue along, again, along the west side, along Kendrick. The tunnel runs north-south. The tunnel entrance is on the south side, facing West 91st Place. The cars will go through the tunnel, occupied by their owners, and emerge on the north side, where they will go to the parking area on the east side of the building, on the right side, where the vacuum stations will be. Next slide. This is a shot from West 91st, an aerial from West 91st. We are proposing a large 150-foot-long, four-foot-high berm along West 91st. This is to block the visual access to the south-facing tunnel entrance that you see beyond. Next slide. The building elevation and how we've taken great care into modifying, mixing the materials on the buildings, the colors, projections, and tower forms to break up the mass of the building and to create some very strong shadow lines and have the building hug the ground. Next slide. This is a example of the trash enclosure walls that will be surrounding the trash enclosure and the vacuum station. Next slide. This is rendering from the corner of West 91st and Kendrick, showing the amount of landscaping we're proposing along West 91st Street and Kendrick to help effectively screen the tunnel entrance. Next slide. This is along Kendrick. You can see the building is actually four feet below Kendrick, and this is where the cars will be queuing, hopefully when business is good, to run through the car wash. Next slide. Now, this is the east side of the building. You can see the amount of detail on the building to, again, to break the building into a much more human-scale building, along with natural materials and stone and a combination of stucco. Next slide. Again, this is the aerial again. Pass this one. Next slide, please. As it was in there. This is an actual car view from West 91st Place, looking towards that south entrance of the tunnel. You can see by the use of the four-foot-high berm and the landscaping, the building is almost not visible. Next slide. There's the berm. Next slide. That'll be the tunnel entrance there. Next slide. Next slide. Again, just reinforcing the length of the berm all along the southern trajectory of the lot itself. Next slide. That's the conclusion. As Mr. Smetana said, we are asking for three major modifications. One, to allow the single tunnel entrance to face south. Contrary to the rendering you saw, the elevations were actually more correct. It's actually a glass-fronted door, so it'll appear more as a storefront if you happen to be able to see it. That's for that major modification. The other modification is that for car washes The other modification is that for car washes, all vacuum equipment, or all the equipment is supposed to be inside the building. We are asking for the modification to allow us to put the vacuums outside but completely shielded by a 10-foot, 4-inch-high solid masonry wall. The purpose of this request is that the vacuum equipment simply works better, the closer it is to the vacuum stations. The last request is the modification from a 6-foot-high wall to a 10-foot, 4-high wall to completely shield the same vacuum stations. We're very excited to come to Arvada. We feel this is a very, very useful and necessary service to provide to the citizens to maintain their vehicles, and the most important part is that automatic car washes will use approximately 1/8 the amount of water that if you rewash your car in the driveway. And with all those reasons, we hope for a, an approval this evening, and I welcome to take any questions you have.
Very good. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address City Council on this matter? Okay, I'll close the public testimony portion. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Kahn, great presentation, beautiful car wash. I mean, seriously, this is a beautiful car wash. I like it. I just have one quick question in the comments with Planning Commission, and I don't see it resolved, so I just wonder if you could speak to it a little bit. They were asking for the ring road to be 25 feet continuous, and it looks here like 24, but I wasn't sure why the 25 feet, and if you would speak to that.
It was a suggestion at the time of Planning Commissioner, or so we thought. 24 feet is the standard width for the two-lane road, and that's why we have proposed it. We are not, as we stated, I believe, in the Planning Commission notes, if the council feels strongly about widening it to 25 feet, we see no reason as to deny that request. It's just a little bit more than standard.
Thank you.
Perhaps somebody from our team could indicate 24 or 25?
So for the most part, there is an area there that is a sliver when we get the final site plan design, but the intent is 24. Again, to, there are areas where it gets narrow, and so it's be difficult to get the 25, but that's something that we can try to accommodate. We do still have the site plan in process, and that could change, but then we'll have to get our staff to kind of also review, make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of allowing for that to add that extra, but so, and whether they could do it all. So that's something we could look at at the site plan.
Thank you. I don't feel strongly about it. I was just wondering what the conversation around it and why they were requesting that. That's all. So it's not something I feel strongly about.
I think they were just trying to make it all consistent across, but because of the way the road kind of narrows, there's like some areas that will just, you know, be a little sliver to short of getting that whole 25 feet area for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. Mr. Kahn, I have a quick question for you, and that's, I can see on the site plan where the trash and vacuum equipment enclosure is, but where is the vacuum service actually delivered? Is that up by the building, or do cars queue up there to use the vacuum equipment? How does that, how does that work?
They're actually at the head end of the parking stalls that you see on the east side of the building. Unfortunately, they are not rendered, but if, on the site plan documents themselves, each parking stall shares a stanchion that houses two hoses, one for each parking stall on either side. So they're connected underground to the tubes, and the cars simply pull up, and the vacuums are available for their use.
Right, okay. So the enclosure is just really for the equipment for it, but that's not the spot that the vacuuming would happen or anything like that? It happens elsewhere.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pfeiffer?
If there's any other questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
You may proceed.
All right. If I get to the right page, I move that Council Bill 21-012, an ordinance vacating a public access easement located within Lot 4B, Block 1, Kandellis Commercial, City of Arvada, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado, be approved on final reading, number 4759, and ordered published by title only.
Motion for approval? Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And there are five votes in council chambers, with Mr. Jones being excused absence, that passes six to zero.
I also move that DA 2020-0122, major modifications for wet rabbit car wash, generally located at 9159 Kendrick Street, be approved. This motion is based on the finding of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
Motion for approval? Ms. Ford?
I vote yes on this, and I'd like to just add, Mr. Kahn, I also think that this design, this site plan, is very attractive, so I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Five yes votes in council chambers as well. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being excused absence. That completes our public hearings for tonight. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
We do not.
Very good. City Council reports, if any? Ms. Simpson?
Yes, first, I just wanted to commend the City Manager and Mr. Archer and everyone for finding the funds for the visitor's center. I think that's going to be really important, particularly with the reopening of the economy. And for anyone watching at home, you may see me in green and gold tonight, Baylor, class of 2005. We're playing for the national title tonight. Go Bears! And for, in Gonzaga, a great team, fantastic team, and just hoping every young man on the court tonight has a lot of fun, a great game, and no injuries.
Well said. Mr. Pfeiffer?
So we had a lot of discussions tonight about affordable housing, and we talked about, you know, funding that associated to housing and homelessness and stuff, and I just wanted to, I want to thank the people that came and spoke tonight about it, because, you know, over the last few weeks, and for those that know me, my oldest son's 24, he works in mental health. He's going for his masters, and he's going to be excited when he gets his master of making $22 to $24 an hour as a mental health worker. Right now, without his masters, he makes about $18 to $19 an hour, so we've been looking for housing for him, and when you start looking at people that are trying to contribute to our community in the mental health fields, we just don't pay enough. And when you talk about affordable housing, we just can't find him a place to live, and he doesn't want, well, let's just be clear, we don't want him to move back necessarily. But we are willing to pay to supplement his, his not come home fees. But when you look at that, you know, on a serious note, my wife and I spent the last few weeks trying to find a place, and Arvada is expensive. You can go to Wheat Ridge, save 20%. You can go to Lakewood, and maybe you save some more. Closer you get to Sheridan, you save some more. But Arvada, you know, Broomfield, absolutely, Boulder is not affordable, so, you know, liberal the city is, it's not, it's not an affordable city. But Arvada is just not affordable, and I know that there's been a lot of recent movement, and I appreciate the council, I appreciate the team, the staff, and trying to bring things forward, and we need to continue doing that, because, you know, I'm living it right now, and he loves what he does. He doesn't want to change what he does. He loves working with kids with autism, and he wants to continue doing that, and, you know, but it's going to get to a point where he's going to have to either leave the field and not contribute back to the mental health arena to find a different job to pay him more, which that would be a detriment to our communities, or we need to step up as a community and start finding places that these folks, like my son, and people that are getting, that are young or trying to get into a field that doesn't pay well, maybe like teachers, and find, find a place that they can live in a very comfortable, safe community like Arvada. And they should be part of our community, part of the fabric and the thread of it. So I just, I just, you know, I didn't bring it all up during the other conversations, but, you know, there's quite a few conversations tonight that caught a lot of motion for me tonight, and this is one that we want to continue, I would encourage that we continue having those conversations, and we continue pushing forward and hopefully continue to make progress here, you know? I've been here 10 years, and I know the mayor's been here 20 years, and I think the mayor has kids that probably fall in those suits as well. And, and we're making progress, it's just not fast enough, I think, and I think COVID kind of set us back as well, so I just encourage you to keep going, keep pushing, keep persevering, and I look forward to good news when we get closer to real opportunities to make affordable housing real. So thank you.
Yeah, actually, I've been here 42 years, but that's, that's okay.
I didn't age you, but go for it if you want.
That's okay. Couple of things, the, we did have a public comment tonight indicating that she had not seen any public statement with regard to the Boulder shooting incident. I issued a statement both to the city team and also to the public that I know our team pushed out, and, and, so we did make a public statement with regard to that tragedy. Also, I've been in direct contact with the mayor of Boulder on several occasions relating to this, and he's been very appreciative of Arvada's involvement from our police department, our investigators, and the assistance we provided on the day of the tragedy and since that time. So we have been very engaged on this very tragic incident and, and the aftermath, and we'll have a discussion as a council in terms of some sort of proclamation to, to do that. Everybody's in support of doing that? Okay with that? Yes, so go ahead and get that proclamation put together, and we'll address that, because certainly the frontline people on all fronts who have helped us get through this pandemic are greatly appreciated, and we all have our favorite folks at the grocery stores and, who have helped us and have maintained a cheerful disposition as much as possible during some pretty tough times, and I think we're finally getting to the end of it. Mr. Devon, your report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, just wanted to remind you of our workshop next Monday. We're going to present the ADA Self-Assessment and Transition Plan. We'll have another update on waste tolling.
Very good. Do we have any report from our esteemed city attorney?
Not from me, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned. Go watch some basketball.
Go Bears!